I don't want to interrupt the principal Owen Hi doing an interview, especially she's saying something good about the Buncombe County Commission.
Where'd everybody go?
All right, let's call our meeting back to order and the next item on the agenda is the consideration of a letter of support for the Lee Walker Heights redevelopment and Dr. Green will present the item along with possibly or others as well who are with us.
Thank you very much. We've been approached by Asheville Housing Authority, they're ready to start to move on with the process for their funding on Lee Walker Heights, so they're here tonight to explain to you why we need the letter of support and what it means for the project going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thanks for your assistance through this process. This letter of support will be used along with the corresponding one that we have received from the city of Asheville, signed by the mayor, as part of our low-income housing tax credit application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We plan to file that application in July, assuming that we have all of the local funding committed, and it will, your funds along with the city funds and the housing authority funds that we've talked about in past presentations will essentially be leveraged through that low-income housing tax credit process, two to one with tax credit equity or debt for the project. So it's important that we have your commitment in place, although the funds don't need to flow until sometime after July 1 of 2018. We need your commitment today. We have our team here from MHO, and Mr. Bell is here, Robert Hooper from The Property. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
So I just have a comment. I'm a supporter of the project and appreciate the opportunity for the input over the past few months, but I was also had a thought, and other commissioners may have too, about that we start the funding next year so that we could possibly impact the budget this year, but my understanding is there's a deadline that occurs, and you may have just said it and I didn't listen very well, July, is that in July the deadline?
We need to file our application for the tax credits in July in order to have those approved late this year or early in 2018 and to have the project on track to hopefully break ground sometime next summer.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the letter of commitment to be signed by Chairman Newman.
Great, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions from the board right now? We will take public comment on this. Any other questions from this time, at this time from the board?
I have one other one. Is the design evolving or is it pretty much fixed and placed?
The design is in the schematic design phase. It's fixed in terms of, pretty well fixed in terms of the number of units and the number of parking spaces and the size of the buildings. There may still be some work on exterior finishes and things like that, and we've talked about the neighboring property out to Biltmore Avenue, and that is still in a very formative stage. We don't have any firm designs for that at this point, but the project that we'll be applying for is the project on top of the hill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any members of the public would like to comment on this item?
Jerry.
Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've contacted several of these people to talk to me about this project, but they won't return my calls, so I have a concern appropriating money. We had a little visual up here one day on the Cosma Hall they're building, and I remember that one time that the city did the Cosma Hall garage, remember that, Mr. Newman? Looked nicer than some of the buildings we ever had, just that garage. But I'm concerned about this Cosma Hall that they have showed us, but they've spent hours with y'all, because I know, they sit down for hours and talk to y'all. The public does not really know yet, and I have a concern that commissioners are going at $4.2 million, and we really haven't got to have a good input on this. When I look at that structure, I think, wait a minute, is this a hotel up there on the square, or is this a real development for the kids and for the structure of housing? Because this don't look idea for our county or our city to have a structure that looks like that. I think we could be a lot more economical about what we're doing if you commissioners would look at your architect you got and do like you did with AB Tech, kind of less analyze this thing rather than just going with the flow. Because we already had a city project, it's sitting over there with a tower up, and how long has it been and how much more money did it cost? We got a city project in the school system done the same thing. So I'm concerned that you commissioners are not really getting your eye on the ball here. So it's a difficult time, but when it gets difficult, you need to ask more questions. So I'll be the one to ask questions if you don't, but I just don't think you scrutinize this enough, period. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second to support execution of this letter. Other questions or comments from the board?
So I do have a question, Dr. Green. I love asking you a question. This will come back to us, right? The dollars, will this dollars come back to us?
The dollars will come, they'll be included in the budget in '19, so you'll have, yes.
We'll have to do this again.
Yes, sir.
It'll have to be presented again.
You'll have to do it three years, basically.
As far as transparency, this will have to be put out there again. People will have to see it, and so this will have to be put out there again. It will, as far as transparency, people will get to see this, and I just encourage you to wow them, you know, with the presentation. So I just want to make that point that when we do vote on the money and the budget, that it will be presented to the public again. They'll have an opportunity to weigh in and give their opinion. This is so that we can get the ball rolling and do something positive for the community today, so.
So I'd just like to make a comment on that. So this will come back in our budget next year, but I just, but I would like to emphasize that this is, we are voting on signing a letter of support for this project, which will trigger them pursuing financing and spending a very large amount of money to further develop this project. So there, this will come back to us as part of the budget, and it will be separately voted on, but I certainly hope as we deliberate on this tonight that people recognize that we are giving our word that we are going to support this project if we execute this letter.
I'd just like to add, I'm proud and inspired to be able to support this and want to applaud the really extraordinary work that's gone into this from y'all's teams, but also the level of involvement from residents. You know, I feel like this project has been vetted every single which way, and there's a real urgency to it, but also a real transformational quality about what's possible when we think about people living in safe homes where they can live up to their full potential in our community and changing patterns where things are broken. So thank you all for your leadership. I'm honored to have an opportunity to be a part of supporting this.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Go ahead, Commissioner Hi.
I appreciate what you're doing, and, you know, I have discussed this, and I look at it like I looked at Eagle Market Street. Everybody, you know, this, this basically supposedly helps you get the money. Now it's up to y'all to make it work, and that's, you know, if it don't work, you don't get the money. So that's, that's the understanding and, but that's, so that makes the issue better for all of us up here, but I'm supportive of it, too.
Terrific. Sorry about, Jasmine was in the way. All right, any, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution appointing Keith Miller as interim tax director, and Dr. Green will present some information on this item.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you all know, after 30 years of service and 14 years as, a little over 30 years of service and 14 years as a tax director, Gary Roberts will be retiring next Friday on June the 30th, and the, you know, sometimes I look at that and it's like, how exactly does this happen? Because I feel like I've grown up with Gary. But we cannot go without a tax director. We have to have an assessor and a collector, so we're asking you tonight to go ahead and appoint Keith Miller, who is our assessor today, and you heard from him in the revaluation process, to be the interim tax director. We will, we, it is out for recruitment. It'll be out there 30 days and it closes a little after the holidays, the July 4th holidays, and then we can make decisions, or you can make decisions going forward, but we do need an interim tax director to stand, to handle the tax department in July until a decision is made on going forward, and Mr. Miller's in place, knows the people, has done a really good job, and has great staff to help him get through this process. And we still have taxes to collect and to wrap up '17, and it will not be long till we'll be sending out bills on '18. So I need your help in approving him as the interim director.
I will put forward to approve Keith for interim director with a contract. A second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public who want to comment on the motion? Mr. Yelton.
Brownie, you do speak soft, you're gonna have to concentrate on getting that microphone. You and Joe Belcher both.
Oh, my wife, my wife doesn't say that.
You're gonna have to learn to grab that mic when you talk so we can hear you, especially in the back of the room. We're getting older, hearing's getting bad, too. I had an experience of being able to work with Mr. Miller, and because I went down and challenged some taxes on two pieces of property I had, I met him. He even talks a little bit like Gary, kind of smiled, you know, that way Gary talks, and I found him to be very willing to help and answer questions. And I just wanted to tell you that from my perspective, because I think that you might ought to look at him, because I think he can slide in and take over while Gary slides out without any problem, because the personalities seem to be very, very close. Because people do have a tendency to develop personality, the people they work with. Now, boards, that's a warning for you, you better keep your own personality, okay? You don't want to all look like Brownie up there, okay? But I do think he'll do a good job for you, and I do experience that, and I wanted to share that with you, from my perspective, which I do pay the bills.
Yes, you do.
Anyone else? All right, there's a motion and a second. Further deliberation, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Keith Miller is the interim tax director for Buncombe County. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding policy consideration for establishing a 100% renewable energy goal for Buncombe County, and we have a presentation on the agenda. Is it possible to present that, to have that called up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, if we could do that, that'd be great, so other folks can see it. And so this is an informational presentation only at this time. We are not asking for any vote at the meeting this evening. All right, great, thank you. And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stay up here and see if I can direct this through here, but I want to, I want to express appreciation to some of the other commissioners who expressed interest in starting the conversation around looking at this concept. Commissioners Whitesides and Beach Ferrara and Frost all joined in asking that we begin consideration of looking at this, at this policy idea. And so I'd just like to go through a couple of the slides that are in our agenda packet regarding this idea. Once we're done with that, if there's any, we can have any questions or conversation, but again, no votes expected tonight. Recommendation would be to, following the presentation tonight, to have our county staff take a look at this. We also have the advisory committee from the Energy Innovation Task Force, which includes, you know, diverse group of perspectives in the community, from Duke Energy to all the way over to the Sierra Club, have them take a look at this idea as well. And then once, once we've done that, this can come back to the county commission for further discussion later this summer. All right, so I always see other people trying to make this thing work. I'll see if I do any better, maybe not. Maybe, I think I turned it off.
Go on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, advance, next slide, please. All right, as, as, as folks are aware, Buncombe County adopted a clean energy policy back in 2013, and the county's existing policy commits the county to an 80% reduction in our own carbon footprint with an average reduction goal of 2% per year until we achieve the goal. And the goal is inclusive of all of our buildings as well as our vehicle fleets. Next slide, please. And as we heard in a great presentation from our general services staff several months ago, the county has made excellent progress in achieving this goal since we first adopted it in 2015, our first year, we reduced it by almost 3%, and then the following year by over 7.5%. So we're off to a, a great start in achieving the goal, and we're ahead of schedule. Next slide, please. We've had discussion at our commission meeting, a couple of recent meetings, about the idea of the solar farm at the retired county landfill, which if successfully completed, could achieve as much as an 18% additional reduction in our county's carbon footprint by itself, so that one project coupled with our existing achievements could together achieve up to a 28% reduction in our goal here in just the first couple of years. Next slide, please. So the concept that we're talking about today would be to, to keep the current policy that we have for an 80% carbon reduction goal at 2% per year, but to recognize this as a conservative base case policy for the county, and to, to adopt in addition to that goal, a more ambitious policy for Buncombe County to establish the goal of achieving a 100% clean renewable energy, sources of energy for our own operations within the next 10 years. And so the goal would be for the county to be carbon neutral by the year, by June 20th, 2027, although actually if we don't adopt it tonight, that would move it out to August 15th of 2027, to be, to be exact. And then the county, you know, these are, these are the county's own operations, so these are things that we have direct control over and responsibility for, because they're our own buildings, our own fleets. This would be us leading by example in that goal. But we would also be supporting the idea that the community, that there's a larger transition to renewable energy for the community as a whole. And like other communities and businesses in our country that are working to achieve that goal, we would endorse that and encourage those efforts at a community level in Buncombe County. Next slide, please. The, the concept of adopting a 100% goal for utilization of clean energy might sound like a radical idea on the face of it. It's actually an idea that has been strongly embraced by many of our nation's businesses, including some of the largest corporations in our country. And this slide shows just a few of those companies that are already actively working on the same type of goal, companies ranging from Apple, which has already achieved a 93% use of renewables for its corporation, which is no small matter considering the energy intensive nature of the, the data centers that the corporation operates across the country, Bank of America, BMW, a US-based textile company Interface from Georgia, Walmart, have all made similar goals to what would be considered in this policy for Buncombe County. Next slide, please. And this slide is a, is a map showing some of the different communities across our country that have adopted this goal or a goal very similar to it. So countries, so communities all across, all across the country and in, and in all parts of the country, doesn't, this map was printed before Atlanta, Georgia adopted its goal, which would be one of the other communities here in the southeast. Next, next slide, and this is just going into a little bit more detail about a few of those communities that have made these kinds of public sector clean energy commitments. Communities ranging from Burlington, Vermont, a city not, not that much smaller than Asheville, North Carolina, that has already, not only as a governmental entity, but as a community, achieved 100%, 100% use of renewable energy for their community, to communities as far from there as Georgetown, Texas, population 54,000, they adopted a business contract to procure 100% of their power from wind and solar energy in their state, and they locked in their power rates for that renewable energy at a lower rate than their previous contracts from utilities in their part of Texas that were based primarily on more traditional fuel sources. Other communities like San Diego, California, one of the, I think San Diego is now the eighth largest city in the country, has made, made the same commitment. The effort was unanimously adopted by their city council led by their Republican Mayor Kevin Falconer. And, and I won't read all the others, but other, other cities, and even the state of Hawaii has made a commitment to power their entire state in, in the same manner. So that is, that is the, the presentation. The last slide, next slide, please, just again recommends that we don't take any action on this tonight. The idea was to simply introduce this concept for initial consideration and to ask our county staff to take a look at the policy idea, as well as to ask the Energy Innovation Task Force and interested members of the community to deliberate about this with an eye towards reconsideration by the county based on their recommendations and input at our county commission meeting in August. So I thank you again for the opportunity to spend a little bit of time presenting this idea. If there's any initial questions or comments, we can take those now before we move on to our next item. So any, any comments from other, other commissioners or any questions at this time?
I'm really excited because as the gentleman said in the back, this is something that we can do, everybody can do, on a daily basis in every part of our life, whatever we touch, to work on this collectively together, and I think it's moving the county forward, and I see tremendous commitment from our community to do this.
So I've got a short comment. I'm a supporter of renewable energy. However, I tried to do this at my home, and my experience was personally, I was unable to, to afford it. So I would want to just challenge staff and Ms. Stone, new county manager, that we, we look very carefully at the affordability and the impact. Of course, we're going to see the savings, and that we've looked very carefully at the affordability of that goal. 2027 might be a little aggressive. It may be that, you know, that doesn't necessarily have to be, have to be in stone. If you look at some of the other cities that have tried it, their dates are a lot farther out. So I would just challenge us to look at that, because you've got to be able to sustain it, you've got to be able to afford it. It's a, it's a noble goal, but you have to be able to do all that. So that would be my initial comments. And
Kesar Frye.
I was just kind of reading here, Poliato, California, they went 100% carbon neutral, but they own a dam, they own 25% of a dam, they buy wind. It's a town of 65,000 people, they got solar on it, five megawatts of solar. We have the bio gas burner down here that we sell the energy from, but when it gets on down here, they, they make a hundred million dollars a year off the electric company they own, but they spend 400,000 of it on buying wind and energy from, which is, it says basically coal and gas. So how, I don't understand how you get 100% of something when you're still buying something that's, we've got out here already. We've got gas and we've got coal, and they're, they're having to buy energy for a makeup. As they say in the thing, their light goes down, it comes up in the winter, and their turbines generate more electricity. So there's more to this than I can see, so we need to look at it all around, and I want to say every dime I can, I mean, we just put in a new gun range, the light bill's $1,200 a month. So, you know, we're not going in the right direction at the present time. So I understand where you're at, and I understand that we all want the lights to be on, I can go back here and turn them off if they don't like them, but I'm, there's more to the story than this story can be. I mean, 80% was going to be hard, 100%, that's just, it's called a dream, and I could see 80% almost, but there's no way we can get to 100%. And I'm, I'm like the kids back here, I love the earth. I've been around it a long time, and actually was raised, and Joe myself, we both got raised in the coal country, so we're still kicking, and, but, you know, right now, let's just look at, look at it where this is something to look at, this is something, and I, we have two very good people in this county that have basically, the last year in this budget thing on percentage of energy savings, we did nothing except for what they did to save. So, you know, let's, let's keep it with our people. We work for this county, that's who we work for, and we have to trust our people to make decisions to help us save energy in every building that we have, and that's the way I look at this project. So I thank you for letting me have the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation, Chairman Newman, and thanks to folks who spoke earlier in the evening. One thing I'm excited about is the visionary nature of this and the ambitious nature of it, which also feels really appropriate to the moment we're in, and I'm excited that we'll have some time this summer to really hear critical input from county staff and community leaders, but also hope we might have some opportunities to have some community level discussion about this. You know, I, I think like a lot of folks have some learning to do about some of the technical aspects of this, and we want to make sure we're vetting the numbers and looking at it, and so hope we can build in some opportunities for, for that kind of discussion as well. And, you know, I just, I've talked a lot about the business dimensions of why this makes sense, and I think, you know, coming from the faith community, I know that there's just such strong commitment from growing numbers of folks across traditions and denominations to understanding this also as a, about faith in public life and how we take care of the, how we're stewards to the planet that, that we were blessed to be part of for a while. But I also, just one more piece I want to add, since we're kind of kicking off this conversation, is I have a dear friend who's a pediatrician who specializes in researching the effects of climate change on pediatric health. How do, how do kids, how's their health impacted, especially in cities and urban areas more broadly? And I think those are the kinds of layers that this gives us a chance to peel back on and really look at. You know, it's not just a business issue, it's not just a stewardship issue, there's also very real public health issues that can affect the most vulnerable among us, sometimes before we even realize it. So all that to say in summation, I'm appreciative of the opportunity to have this discussion as a commission, as a county, but also just as a community. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, well, thanks everyone for your, your, your feedback on it at this time, and I'll just, one last comment, I would just say, I think that Commissioner Belcher's comments about, you know, the cost of energy is really important. I mean, the, the clean energy goals and the climate issues we face are extremely important, but energy's something that we need as a, as families need it to live. It's not really, it's not really optional, it's a, it's a basic necessity. So the cost is really important, and I think everybody appreciates that, and, and will be very cognizant of how we look at going in this kind of direction while making sure our energy remains affordable as well as as clean as possible.
And to that, I recognize the cost, but the cost of not doing this is far steeper.
All right, thanks everyone for your Thanks everyone for your time on this item this evening. All right. The last item under new business is a resolution endorsing expanded tax relief through the homes, through an expanded homestead circuit breaker tax relief policy in North Carolina. And Michael Frue will present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This idea, as far as I know, came from Chairman Newman not too long ago, and perhaps Commissioner Frost, the idea to expand the homestead circuit breaker, some tax relief for regular working-class citizens. It's always a hard thing to sell on tax directors across the state because they always have to try to work with less, and if there's an exemption or exclusion, then someone has to make up the difference, as I think Commissioner Frye pointed out sometime earlier this evening. So first, just by way of a little bit background, I checked with Gary Roberts, our outgoing tax director, just to see how much these programs are used. Currently, there's about 4,400 elderly and disabled families in the program with that own real estate, under the same category of elderly or disabled, there's about 400 with mobile home properties. We have about 400 veterans in the program, and I'm not exactly sure what the exclusion is. Just to give you an example of how that works for the exclusions, the income threshold would be $29,500 currently. So if you're elderly or disabled, not talking about the homestead deferment we're talking about or bringing up today, but that $29,500 would be excluded from the value of their property. So they're not taxed on that value. Whatever the tax rate is on that, they don't pay it. That's exempted, excluded forever. Now, for the homestead, the current homestead circuit breaker builds upon the elderly and disabled. So you have $29,500 is the limit, you give 150% of that, so your target number is 44,250. So let me tell you the current elements of the law. Owner has an income preceding calendar year of 150% of the income eligibility, so that's the $44,250. If you're a married couple, that'd be the max. If you're single, elderly, or disabled, that would also be the max. The owner has owned the property as a permanent residence for at least five years and has occupied the property as a permanent residence for those five years, have to be 65 years of age or totally and permanently disabled, and the owner has to be a North Carolina resident. So that's the current law, and there's only, according to Gary Roberts, about 25 or 30 people or families in the program. Anything, part of the issue with that is that it's sort of hard to explain, and a lot of people don't understand what a deferment is. So in this case, if you are deferred and you're in the program for 10 years, you have a certain percentage deferred from your taxes for those 10 years, under normal deferment, you think like in a forestry program, if you sell it at the end of that 10 years, then you have to pay all the deferred taxes. The current law in this homestead circuit breaker is you'd only pay after 10 years, three years back. So, in my example is, I'm not really good at fancy math, that's why I went to law school, but we have, you can defer 4% of your income. So if a person makes $20,000, 4% would be the maximum they would have to pay. So if they had a $1,000 tax bill out in the county for county tax and a fire district, that $1,000 tax bill, they'd only have to pay 880. So, the idea from this resolution would be to increase that 150 income threshold by some amount. And also, speaking to Commissioner Frost earlier, she would like to also make an amendment, I believe, such that paragraph number two under the now-therefore would read as follows, and this would be to get rid of the five-year residency requirement. So that this board requests that legislation be approved to increase the income eligibility limit and open the program to any permanent North Carolina resident who is at least 65 years of age or totally and permanently disabled. And that would hit, actually right on what Gary told me some this afternoon when I asked him about the program, is those two factors. How does the deferral work in five years in the program? A lot of people that are in that stage of life don't live a long time in one particular permanent residence, or maybe they've been there their whole lives, but, you know, we have it both ways. But if it was just for permanent residents who were North Carolina residents, and that was for their permanent home, the idea from that amendment would be to make it open for those as well, not just for those that have been there for five years or more. I'd be happy to try to ask, answer any other questions, as long as it doesn't have a lot of math. But that's how it works. I mean, it is 150, perhaps the, the resolution just asked the General Assembly to use their discretion, maybe make it 200%, 300%, I don't know. But that could also work with the percentage of the cap. So there's a number of ways to do it to make this program probably more attractive to more people, not just in Buncombe County, but across the state. And I do also remember when this passed, like 10 or so years ago, there was a lot of thought that it'd be much more popular in use than it apparently is. So I think that on that basis, the motion does make a good deal of sense.
The reason why I said that about removing section two is, I don't think, as long as people are permanent residents, having a limit on how long they've owned the property, sometimes when people initially acquire property, those are the most challenging times, and we know what incomes are in Buncombe County, and I think by taking that out, this supports more homeownership. Homeownership, as we know, is challenging, to say the least, and so by taking that out, it takes away an impediment. I mean, for some people, they won't even be able to have the house for five years because of income restraints.
So, then we're, with the amendment, your, homestead to me means somebody that's lived in their home for a certain period of time, at some point, they don't, they either pay reduced taxes, or they don't pay any taxes on their home. Is that right?
Just as a common colloquial kind of thing, I would agree with that, but just thinking of the old pioneer days, I mean, someone homesteads, here, you're homesteading, I guess that's why they had originally the five-year minimum requirement. You're elderly or disabled, you've been in that house a long time, let's see if we can cut you some, cut you a break.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's a different angle. I'm not against the, the, what your, your thought, I'm not against your, her thought, and I don't want to put in words in your mouth, but let me see if I'm receiving this properly. What, you're wanting to just make it more available to those that are permanent residents and that meet the income requirement. So, you're looking more towards the income requirement than that they've been there and that residence for five years.
Right. I mean, I want to, and I think this board does want to support homeownership and help people that don't make a lot of money.
I mean, I think where this came from was in our breakout, our first breakout, which was evidence of improved conversation between this board, and I remember Commissioner Presley, Commissioner Frost, Commissioner Newman, and everybody jumping on it. Sure, you know, it'd be a great, it'd be a good thing. I do like the change because it does remove the reimbursement for local governments for lost revenue, because there's no chance they're going to pass that.
You think?
Yeah. I mean, that's a waste of ink. They're not, that's not going to happen. And the reality is, is for this to happen, if they pass it for the state, they've got to get 100 counties to agree to this, right?
They do.
So if we're going to do a resolution to the state, then it's going to have to be one that our neighbors are going to be willing to do, or it's just us, you know, having a, you know...
But if you don't ask...
A good idea, but so, I may be leaning towards her language, I'm not sure, but I may be leaning towards that language, because it might make it easier for the state to recommend. There has been conversations with the state already regarding this. I would like to hear county managers' comments on this in light of the information that's been provided to the legislature, and what you might think about this too, since you've provided some information already to them.
Thank you. I do think that because it is a property tax issue, that has to be treated the same across the state. With, in 100 counties, we don't all have the same income level, so there'll have to be a balancing factor in terms of how to deal with that. But also want to tell you that we've asked Keith Miller to go ahead and take a look at some of the options for us, so we can bring something back to you, and it's too late in a long session to get anything done, but certainly something that we could look at and ask him to look at in short session. But we are helping him pull some of the information he'd need about people's age, how long they've been in the houses, the data they'll need to actually make a good recommendation, and to take a look across the state to see what's that factor that makes it fair for everybody. So I do expect him to come back with recommendations on what kind of documentation and letter to send to the General Assembly.
Okay. You know, after we, it did come up at our work session, and I thought it was a great idea, and I think it's, you know, one of those things that does have appeal kind of across the board. So, one of the other things I thought was interesting, after we talked about it at our work session, and I don't know if they sent it to everybody, but I know I got a letter from the county commissioners in Polk County, and they sent us a letter, basically, I don't think it's exactly the same thing that we're doing, but same spirit, and they were basically kind of lobbying us, like, hey, we passed this resolution, we, so they're kind of out there working it, and now this is Buncombe County kind of joining in, and so, yeah, we can do it by ourselves, but hopefully by working with some of these other counties that are obviously seeing some of the same challenges, you know, this is something that could get real attention in Raleigh, so...
I mean, if we don't speak up, you know, if we don't say anything, nothing will, you know?
Has, has there been a motion been made?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
In point of order, would that be to include the revised language?
Change the amendment.
That would...
Yes. Yes, with the revised language.
That Commissioner Frost suggested?
Yes.
I would like for you to read the language one more time.
Yes, sir. To replace paragraph two under now-therefore with the following, that this board requests that legislation be approved to increase the income eligibility limit and open the program to any permanent North Carolina residents who is at least 65 years of age or totally and permanently disabled.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any public comment on the motion? Yes, ma'am. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Brenda Smith. South Carolina had had a homestead extension when I took over my parents' place, and I thought it was great, it's like automatic 5,000 for 65 and above, and it sounds similar to what he's just mentioned here, or across the board, if you're at least 65 and, or disabled, and it didn't have to be where you had to be in the home a certain amount of time, but still would keep up more elderly people in their own homes, which is very important. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Jerry Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a really nice issue to talk about. I've sent y'all an email here recently, House Bill 900. Did you get it? Wanda got it. Mandy got it. Okay, I'm holding you accountable because you ain't answered me back.
Just, just...
This is House Bill 900. This has to do with municipalities. It ain't went into law yet, but it's going to be charging the tax back to the municipalities, or not charging, they're going to be able to collect tax if this goes through, which I think will be pretty much in the process. But the cities are 79% property taxes in the city is where you get the biggest piece, across the whole state. And when you're looking at the percentage of money, am I quoting that wrong, girls? Okay. Then, you look at the amount of money that's going into the cities, this is not off the chart of what you and you're talking about. Only thing I'm cautioning is you're going to do the shell game here. You're going to help people, but in the process, taxes are going to be raised in the city on food and all the things that you eat in the city to compensate for the infrastructure of the use of the city. So, I'm just pointing out, you need to be looking at both sides of this issue, because you tax, you tax one person, you let the other one go. But you ain't really let him go because you're taxing again somewhere else. So, there might be more than that to it. This tax business is not only on this exemption, I just wanted to point out, on your energy thing, and also on the other things you're talking about, is on the state level, you are fixing to get another vision of an increase from the Duke Energy. You know why? Because you've done such a good job on property tax, because then Duke is supposed to get a lower tax rate, okay? Now they're going to ask for an increase, so you've done too good of a job here. So, these taxes, man, they go in circles, somebody's paying somewhere. I think there's more to this, on this issue of homestead related to this municipality house bill, so check into that.
Thank, all right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, thank you, Mr. Frue. Okay, the next item, we've got two boards where we need to make some appointments. The first is the planning board, where we have one vacancy from the Reynolds District, and let's just go from the Commissioner Frost's side to the other side, and just have each commissioner identify the person they would prefer.
Billy Taylor.
Same, Billy Taylor.
Billy Taylor.
Billy Taylor.
Billy Taylor.
Billy Taylor.
Billy Taylor.
All right.
He might get it.
All right, Billy Taylor is appointed to represent the planning board. Appreciate all the folks who stepped forward for that important board. The Mount Area Workforce Development Board has 10 vacancies, including seven reappointments. We have 10 folks here who have applied for reappointment or appointment.
So I'll recommend Ashley Cook over Ingberg, King, Rakes, Reed, Hackney, Simmons, and McGlashan.
And it's late, man. Mouth isn't working, so...
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we do have one other item. We need, I would like to see if there's a motion to add another item to the agenda. This item would be to create the Dr. Wanda Green Scholarship at Alita Home. Is there a motion to add this to the agenda?
Some, oh, second.
Some of, some of.
All right.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Sure, so, all right. So this board of commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, would like to create the Wanda Green Scholarship Fund at Alita Home in the amount of $5,000 to be used to help parents in need of, in need cover childcare fees. These funds will be part of the Alita Foundation and permanently restricted for said use in honor of Dr. Wanda Green's service to the people of Buncombe County. Does, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Is that moved?
Second.
Second.
I'm there.
I've got it. It's on it.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I would, I would just like to add that I'm sort of at a loss for words in terms of this transition that the county's going to be going through, and, but just want to express my appreciation again, Wanda, for your work for Buncombe County, your service to this board, and... And I have learned so much from you during the time I've been here, and I deeply appreciate it. And so, thank you very much. And we wanted to just do this this evening as a very small expression of our appreciation for an organization that you, we know that you care a lot about as well. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You don't, I don't know how to tell you how that touches me because it touches others, but this has been a wonderful, wonderful part of my life, and I appreciate all your support and all that you've enabled me to do. And I hope that, I hope I've left it a little bit better than, than I found it. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Okay, we could, we have a couple of quick announcements.
No, we're not.
Okay. We're all good, we're all good. All right. July 4th will be a holiday and county offices will be closed. August 1st at 5:00 PM, we will have a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners here in room 326 at 200 College Street. Question before we adjourn there, so on August, let's make sure I've got this date right. So, it is, it's August 1st at 5:00 PM, but we, there has been some discussion about a work, about a work session in July, actually, too. So, do we have those dates identified yet, or we need a little more time to work that out?
11th and the 25th.
The 11th and 25th.
Right, so the 11th and 25th, there'll be a work session of the county commissioner starting at 12?
The meeting's 12, and then actually begin the agenda at 12:30.
Okay, and they'll be downstairs at 200 College Street on the first floor.
What time will it end?
10.
You're late.
10. 10 o'clock.
No.
Okay. Is there any further business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, do we have a closed session? We do not, do we?
No.
No, all right. We do not. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourned.
We did better than ourselves.